Welcome, everybody, to the September 18th, 2014 Citewood Zoning Board of Appeals. We have the board here in front of you, our esteemed building inspector and his new assistant, Mr. Vogel is here, as well as Nicole. For the short period, to those in the audience, Nicole will be soon a member of the fire department. So, we hope you don't see her as much there as you see her here. So, we can read our first... Oh, we have some old business to attend to first, or do we?
Yeah, I'm just gonna have you vote. Stockbridge Realty Trust requested another continuance, so I'm just gonna have you vote on that.
Okay.
I'll just read it into the record. Continuum from August 21st, 2014, request for the zoning board of appeals to review changes with regard to the comprehensive permit issued on January 16, 2003, to Stockbridge to Realty Trust. The project is located at 9 Stockbridge Road, assessors map 054, block 2, parcel 27.
Okay.
They have... They did send a letter to the board dated September 12th requesting to continue to our next hearing, which will be October 19th.
Before we do that, what... Can you give us an update on what's going on there at all?
Stockbridge?
Yeah.
Well, no, the engineers are still doing.
Yeah. Okay.
And the engineer representing the board, John Chesia, is doing a really very, very comprehensive job. It's a very sensitive area.
Yes.
It's a zone A and dwell water supply, and he's kind of thoroughly involved. There's a person who named Buck, who seems to be an expert on zonase, and he's got to kind of overlook things too. So, yeah, so they still are working on plans, finalizing plans to protect the water supply.
And the end result, you think, is they're gonna come to an agreement about what needs to be done?
That's what they're working towards, yeah.
Is that where it's headed? Okay, great.
As I say, they're all working together very well at this stage of the game.
That's good.
Very cooperative.
Excellent.
I also want to let the board know I did receive an additional proposal to the pay review account, so to cover the cost for John Chesia.
Excellent. All righty. So, do we have a motion on the continuance?
Motion to continue to our October 16th meeting.
Yeah. I have something. It's just, it's old business, and I don't think it's...
Oh, we didn't finish that thing. We didn't vote the motion yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nicole, the only thing I want you to note is if there's a necessity for me to be here next week, I mean, next month, if they actually come for us, I'm not gonna be here.
Okay.
So, I don't know. We've had so many continuances, and I don't even have a clue on, you know, who's been here.
I don't think it really matters on the continuances as much.
No, no.
The first couple of meetings that we had, I'll have to go back and just verify who was present.
Right, that's probably a good thing to do, and just so you can let them know ahead of time if that's apt to be an issue.
Okay.
I will say on that, by the time John Chesia, Pat Galvin, conservation agent, and the town council consensus with the other parties, it will be, you know, something I think the board will be happy with.
I anticipate it.
Really been working at it.
You think it'll get done before Christmas?
I don't know.
Okay. Well, we may just be voting on another continuance. Okay, so, did you have some?
Yeah, I just have some old business. It's more, it's not... I just wanted to update you on the building, South River.
Okay.
The... One of the conditions in the special permit from the zoning board of appeals was that the developer provide an offsite affordable housing unit, even though it's not affordable yet, which he's agreed to do. And I just want to report, and I think you've... The board members have received correspondence on this from the developer's attorney, that he's well underway. It's a piece of land off Stockbridge Road that for which they have entered into a purchase and sale agreement. We have a letter from the chairman, I think, John Allen.
For the property trust.
Basically, given the go-ahead, and it has the blessing of, I think, you know, all the people involved, and we... I don't believe we're holding surety on that job, but in order to ensure that this affordable unit is constructed, we're going to be holding COs on the final units until it's constructed. But I'd say he's very close to coming in for permit. And I have spoken with him. Essentially, once the special permit is issued by the board, the conditions become, you know, purview of the building inspector to enforce, and I'm satisfied that they can move it on.
Good. Walter, do you have anything you wanted to add to that?
No, I just wanted to say thank you for all of your help.
Well, thank you for, you know, shepherding it through. Do you have... Not holding anybody to anything, do you have an anticipated completion date for this?
Well, it depends on delays, mostly because I was at the Mass General more than I was home. But I have an idea that this affordable housing will be built and ready for action before the end of July.
Excellent. Well, we look forward to it.
Thank you.
It'll be a great addition to the town. So, thank your client, and thank you for following through with it, working with Neil so well, so... Okay. Anything else on that?
I'm sorry.
Okay, excellent. Nicole?
All right. Our second application this evening, our final one, is Martin Toney of 11 Second Ave, request MGL 748, section 6, special time to raise the...
Good evening.
Hi.
Come on forward. You were just here.
Yeah, I was.
[laughing] So, why don't you tell us about this permit that you're seeking?
So, we have an existing garage, and it's... You see the pictures. It could be, I could probably take it down myself in one day. It's been ready to go for a while, but it keeps things dry inside, so that's why it's still there. And so, I just wanted to get it down and make another garage that's a little bigger than that one. So, that's about 21 by 21 in that area. So, the garage that I'd like to build is 24 by 24.
I'm sorry, you said it was 21 by 21 now?
Yeah, 20 by 21, something like that. And the reason I'm here is because it's, you know, on the lot line or near the lot line, and that's the way all the garages, I mean, the neighbors' garages, you know, right near the lot line too. So, it's just the way the garages are in the neighborhood. It's not the way that zoning law is...
If you call it existing nonconforming. I learned that at the last meeting.
You learn well. You could be a next board member.
The good news is we have, you know, three lots on that second ave, so we have a nice big piece of property. So, I'm not trying to squeeze something in. If we did move it forward, it would just leave dead space behind it, which wouldn't be that attractive. And if, from the pictures, you can see, there's nothing, there's no houses behind it or anything. It's just what's been unattended vegetation for as long as we've been there for 30 years.
Do you have different plans? Because as I look at these plans, they don't really give any dimensions of your garage, and they don't give the distance from the lot line for the garage.
I think I...
We need a plot plan, a different plot plan.
Yeah, I mean, this is a miniature of the plot plan.
Okay.
That's an exact...
The material in that folder is exactly what was in the previous application that he got approved for that expired. He just took it
Right.
From archive photocopy there.
Right, right. Well, I think we're gonna need... And do you have an engineer-stamped copy of this?
I do, I do.
Okay, we're gonna need that.
Are we looking over?
Just to hold it.
That's what we have.
Yeah.
But this is something different. This is one that was done by rural associates in Pembroke on August 21st, 2014, but we...
I have no idea why I don't have that. I rolled it up tonight to bring it, and somehow I guess I...
Is that the...
Is this one?
Is that the previous plan?
No, I don't have the previous one. Oh, no, no, actually, I might, but it's...
No, it's not. I don't think it's...
They didn't... I don't think they... This is Chief Justice Cushing Highway. This is a different one.
So...
No.
So, let me see here. So, it's actually over the lot line, based on this.
My old garage is eight inches over the lot line on the... On one side, and one inch... No. It's one inch over the lot line on one side and eight inches inside the lot line on the other.
If we just, in the time since we've seen you, we had a surveyor come and do the proper... You have a blow-off, blow-down of that. It's just a photocopy. But he said that you guys might look more favorably on it because it's gonna become less nonconforming.
It's five foot.
Yeah.
Well, we would move it in.
We could move it in. We have...
Yeah.
Do you plan to move it in a foot from the lot line that was surveyed?
Well, we'll say, at the very minimum, we're gonna need a stamped copy of that plot plan.
Yeah.
Of this plot plan.
It's 15 minutes away.
Yeah, we're not waiting. Bring it in tomorrow.
Oh, yeah. I'll be there as soon as I can.
No problem. Let everybody look at this one. In the meantime, does anybody have questions?
No, I just, I didn't know if it was possible to get a little farther off the lot line.
Well, I mean, we were gonna move it, you know, in, you know, a foot, so we wouldn't be, you know, taking any chances that the surveyors... If we moved it further in, it just disrupts the flow of the yard, and it just creates space behind it, which would just be dead space, really. Nobody would ever go there.
And now, just to clarify, the other lots that you own are a lot of, well, 43, 44, and 45, is that?
Yeah.
Okay. But not 34, 33, 32, behind to the side?
We own... No.
Okay, I just want to make...
That's this... That's this house right there.
I'm first, that's first half.
I'm first, yeah, yeah.
Obviously, these houses were laid out on 5,000-foot lots. So, you've got a triple-sized lot, if you want to put it that way. But for the town of Citewood, it's not a huge lot.
I'm sorry, for the neighborhood?
For the neighborhood, yeah. It is a large lot for the neighborhood. But it's also, the house was designed to sit on one lot, although it probably was built... The owner of the house at the time probably had acquired all three lots because obviously the way they positioned it and stuff, and the garage being positioned where it is, it all suggests that that's the way it was intended. My concern is that, as much as you say the space behind it isn't going to be usable, that's true for anyone with a side yard or rear line setback. You know, a typical rear setback of 20 feet on a half-acre lot allows a house to sit quite a ways back, but not all the way back on the lot line. And I guess, I guess where you're looking to go from a one-story structure to a two-story structure, which I'm sure will be more usable for you, I will ask at some point what your intention is for the second floor. It would seem to me that it, unless you can tell me that it's, like, there's a big rock sitting there that makes it impossible to move it forward or reposition it, I think it could be more useful, more attractive, and more conforming if you did pull it off the rear line more than just a foot. And I'm kind of leaving that open for you to tell me why you can't. I know you might not want to, but it's like, it's not a question of want or need.
Well, I would say, I mean, you're gonna answer the topic officially, but first of all, there's an existing structure there.
Mm-hmm.
Second of all, the garage is like an ancillary building to the house. So, there's like a space between those two. So, the way, because it's, let's say, already 20 feet, 21 feet, it's gonna become 24, so that already brings it three feet closer to the house. So, there's like a space that you can walk between.
Mm-hmm.
So, that just gets cramped and cramped and cramped. And so, the flow between the house and the garage, if you bring it into, over the driveways, already we're bringing it about four feet, because the building itself is three feet bigger, and we're bringing in an additional foot to become less nonconforming. So, now, the space that originally might have been eight feet or so between, like, if it steps down from the deck on the house, now that is eight feet there, now we've got four feet there, and now you're saying bring it in further.
But you also have 24 feet to the southwesterly that you could move it away from the house that way.
The existing driveway goes back to this garage, and the driveway wouldn't go there. And plus, in our neighborhood, all, almost all the garages are right out on the lot line, a couple of feet of the lot line, would be more different than the rest of the neighborhood. I mean, I meant to bring some pictures, which I didn't bring, but I'd take, but of the garages that are...
The driveways, you have an entranceway, there's a driveway, drive to the end is garage. You have an entranceway, there's a driveway.
In the past, we have requested on different scenarios with garages and outbuildings that have been reconstructed, we've asked them to move it, especially this one is increasing in size with the second story and size with the western...
Did you talk about time or eight feet? I can't remember what we've been doing.
I think it was five.
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 Yes, because...
That's the...
That triggers it.
Five feet, less than five feet, you've got to probably build a cement wall there. I mean, it's gotta be fire...
Even though it's not a residence, Neil...
Yeah, any structure, any structure.
What Neil's saying is that the structure, because it's within five feet of the lot line, has to be fire-coated at a very, very high level, a very expensive level to you. So, all of a sudden, your choice to move it forward five feet may be a big cost savings. It may not feel like what you want to do because of the space between the house and the garage as you're proposing it. But, you know, turning the garage slightly, sliding it over, moving the driveway a bit to maybe less expensive than building the house, the structure where it is.
Do you get what that means about cost saving?
Excuse me?
Do you get what Mr. Tibbetson means about cost saving? He's saying it might be cheaper.
I'm sorry. He's saying it's cost-saving because we wouldn't have to build this firewall, which, and the reason I'm kind of stunned here is because we had a permit, and the only reason we didn't, you know, we didn't build it is because of the collapse of the economy. And then, I've spent a whole spring getting, you know, engineering documents and plans so that it would make a nice building for us, and for, you know, that would fit in nice with the neighborhood. And this is all very, very surprising.
Your other permit didn't address the garage, though, correct? It only addressed the house.
No, no, no. It was all about the name of the garage.
You haven't given a permit for the garage in 2000? I will say what's changed, frankly, is we've had, what, four, five, six house fires
Right.
in warehouses in close proximity to lot lines, you know, just caught on fire. And it is a concern, it's a state building code concern, so...
I'm a little concerned. I mean, I don't understand that if you feel like you've got a permit for the garage, why are you back here?
It expired.
Recession, and I let the time run.
They were here last month.
It expired by two weeks.
Remember, they were here the last time.
Oh, 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 oh.
We were here six years ago, and we got the approval.
That's correct.
Then we didn't act on it in six years because
That's right.
We lost, you know, a lot of money in the stock market crash.
Right.
And then we decided to act on it, and we missed it by a month.
Somehow, I thought you were subject, you weren't subject to the automatic extension was the problem.
They missed it.
We missed it.
So, you withdrew, and now...
And so, when we were here last time, you said we can't extend something that expired.
Right, right.
And you guys explained that very clearly to us.
Right, right.
And you know what's funny? Because six years ago, we sent out letters to all of our neighbors, and nobody contested it, and you guys gave it to us.
Yeah.
Now, we just sent a bunch more letters to our neighbors, and there's no one here contesting it.
Right, right.
Because our neighbors, in fact, you got a letter from one of our neighbors, who's a lawyer, who wrote to you guys and said, you know, this is gonna make our neighborhood look so much better because their garage needs to be raised. And so, now we're just...
Do we have a choice, Neil? I mean, if we let them build it within a foot?
You can build up to the lot line with, you know, a certain type of construction, so...
But they would have to use this more expensive construction. So, it's really not up to us to say, you can build a foot away using the wood.
Right, no, no.
Let me just ask you. First of all, part of it was about a fire that would affect a building behind it, but there's...
That has nothing to do with it. It's lot line.
It's the distance from the lot.
Lot building code.
It triggers it. Within that five feet, no matter what the, whether it's a home structure or whatever, that's what triggers it.
And we're not empowered to waive that.
I understand that. But in 2008, when we were given the permit, was that law in effect at that time?
Sure.
You just...
You were probably advising the same thing. I don't recall back that far, but I would have been prior at the meeting.
Don't mention that, because I wouldn't be surprised now if it was...
Can someone just explain to me what it is you're recommending to us that you would see would be a benefit?
Moving the garage off the lot line instead of one foot, moving it five feet.
Five feet.
And you can, you have the option...
Should we also a little wave?
Well, you have, that's entirely up to you. We only, you, there's what they call the building envelope. So, what are the setbacks on the side? What are the setbacks from the front? What are the setbacks from the rear?
It would still be nonconforming with five feet, correct?
Correct.
It is still nonconforming.
Can you explain to me a little bit about this wall that would be required so that...
I'd be happy to explain my office. This is a zoning hearing.
No, but I mean, in terms of the cost, that what...
I have no idea. You have to have it designed by an architect, and you'll have to price it out. I'm not, I have no idea.
I will tell you, I think John has said that the windows have to be a particular type of window, which...
You really, I don't think you can even have a window.
Oh, you can't have windows? You couldn't have windows, Neil says, that close to, within a foot of the lot line?
It has to meet a certain fire rating, and that's...
But, so, I don't understand. So, in 2008, this was not a concern, but now it's a concern?
You know what? We really can't speak to what happened in 2008. The problem is that it's...
Six people here tonight.
Let me, can I just say something?
Sure.
When these folks came for permit to build something a foot away from the lot line, we would review the permit, and if it were not fireproof construction, the back wall, we would deny the permit. Period. Whether that would relate to you, whether I was at the meeting or not, I don't know. All I'm saying is, it was a law then, it's a law now, and that law is gonna be enforced. Period.
Okay. So, the back wall, if we go one, if you guys grant us the one foot, then the back wall has to be fireproofed in a certain way.
Right.
And that will cost us a little bit extra on the construction.
Probably not a lot.
More than a little.
Probably a lot.
But we're not, we really don't...
It would, it would cost what it would cost.
Right. I don't think we want to... Your construction cost is gonna be there anyway.
We talked to our builder about that.
I'm going to... Was I on the board, and was I, did I hear this the first time in 2008? I was on, I've been on the board, it was off for a short period of time.
A little sabbatical.
I had a little sabbatical, but I'm...
I was on the board.
I'm just trying to go from the standpoint of...
Do you have the old permit?
I have the whole file from 2000.
Okay.
The way I look at an application like this, what can you do by right, and what can you do, what are you asking us to do to help you? By right, if the structure burned down, or it was...
Al, Brian, and Peter.
Could you rebuild it in its location? Yes, okay. You wouldn't have to relocate it. You could basically rebuild the structure that burned down. What you're asking us to do, though, is you want to enlarge it a bit, which is a change. That's an intensification. You want it to remain near the lot line or slightly off it, which, again, as you say, the neighborhood supports that type of construction, that type of sighting of the property. Raising the question of whether or not it would be, it would impact you financially to build so close to the lot line is really beyond our
Purview.
purview expertise. But we often do it. And Neil's, because Neil's the code enforcement officer, he's well aware of it, and he always brings it up to us when he, when he's here. And we often bring it up because we're aware of it, and John has familiarity in the industry.
If I could just throw something out, too. I mean, even, and we have extremely liberal zoning down in that area where it can be eight feet off the lot line.
Yeah.
So, that means the closest buildings that aren't there pre-existing nonconforming should be 16 feet. In this case here, someone could build a one-story, very substantial building, 15 feet high, 30 by 50, 40, eight feet from the rear, and now they're nine feet away. And that's not the intent of the state building code, to have buildings that close that aren't fire-protected. And I don't think the cost is crushing. I'm just trying to, you know, inform you that there's an additional cost, and you're probably not gonna have windows out there. Five feet, I don't see any reason at all why you can't move it forward five feet.
And absolutely, but just to make their point in that, at five feet, it's going to come further towards second ave than the front corner of their deck, is what they're saying.
Is that what that shows?
Yes. So, they have, with a 24-foot width on the garage and one foot off the lot line, they have three feet of space.
That sounds like a fire hazard to me. I don't...
Well, they have three feet of space in between the, you know, the left-to-right plane on that plan of the second ave side of the garage and the opposite side of their deck.
Well, that's a good estimate, but there's no, there's no, you know...
That's actually, it's exactly three feet of space according to the measurements on that plan, if they go 24 feet wide with the garage.
And 24 is fairly standard, at least our building house is 24 for a garage.
It's based on the measurements.
Yeah.
Okay, rather than the...
But you, again, you could move it, you could move it...
Off the ground.
Yeah, this direction, whatever that is. Easterly, I guess it is. Southerly, south, southeasterly.
You could bring it forward and attach it to the house. I mean, there's lots of things you could do, but we're not, we're just trying to help you consider your application, and then what we feel would be appropriate for you to, for us, the relief we could offer you. But that might impact how you want to plan your project.
Well, it's funny, because we thought we had a building permit because we didn't realize we had been expired, so we already paid a lot of money for plans.
I hear you.
I don't know, the plans have to be changed. You just have to reposition them on the, on the plot plan.
Put it closer to the house, attach the house.
You could pencil it in if five feet, that would work for me.
In terms of the plot plan and relocating the structure, five feet forward,
The plans?
Nothing really changes except where it is on the plan, and if you have a stamped plan that tells us where it is now, and we find based on what is before us, that if you move it forward and have it five feet off the lot, Neil would, you wouldn't have to go and spend a lot of money on new plans. But we're obviously, we're obviously informing you of information that you're not, you weren't previously aware of. I'm also noticing on this plan, the property at eight first ave, which is to the left rear of the garage, there is a house there that's fairly close to the lot line, or a structure. I don't know if it's a garage.
Yeah, they have a deck. They don't have a garage.
Oh, it just shows a structure here. And there's also a structure fairly close to the lot line directly behind your house.
Yes, there is.
And again, what we're looking at is now we're putting another structure in that same close proximity lot line, and that's when you get into the fire issues.
The one that's up the hill diagonally to the back doesn't have a garage, it's just a deck, so it's pretty far. I don't understand that structure.
This is in the floodplain, too, right? So, I guess we'd need a, you'd need a floodplain specifically.
No, well, I don't know if it's on the revised map, but on this, on this property.
I know, that's the problem with it. Does, what does this map say about the floodplain?
Does it give us space between us?
This one?
No, the new map, the new map, right there, the plot plan. Does it say anything about the floodplain?
I'll just say that it's not...
It's not a crack in the house?
It's FEMA Zone X.
Yeah, it's not a floodplain.
Okay.
And that was the finding of the, before. I don't know what's changed, but...
C.
It's up near halfway, but it's pretty high up.
And what here was, this was X as well, before.
But on this one, it says it's in the, it's in the, oh, in the flood hazard zone.
Yes.
Whatever that means.
No, it's Zone C.
This one says C.
This one says C.
C.
C, which is also, C is 500-year, and X, so on.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about floodplain?
No, you don't. The reason they say it's in a special flood hazard zone is because it's on the map. The reason they say it's in a special flood hazard zone, because it's on the map, it's on the special flood hazard map. But it's not in a particular floodplain.
So that's not an issue?
No.
That's good. What is, we do see that you have it as a second floor, what do you anticipate for the second floor?
Have a storage unit now, I empty my storage unit.
It's also only one, I don't have that, I'm just going to have a one door that slides, so it's not going to be two cars, because Marty wants it as a wood shop. We'll store, we'll store one car in it, in the...
But, but someone in the future could turn it into two-car garage. And we might, we might also consider, if it stays close to the rear lot line the way it is, we might suggest that the second story could not be used as living space in the future. Again, because of concerns of fire, these are all, and I, I wasn't on the, I wasn't on your first hearing, and I'm sure the people who were were as thoughtful as, but...
You can imagine this is kind of surprising, because we have a...
And we're not, we're truly not trying to, the question about what it would cost to build would not change. The question of whether or not it makes sense to build it there is, from an economy standpoint, is that's, that would have been on the table, anyway. Whether or not it's appropriate to authorize you to build it now versus what was said in 2008 is a finding for the board.
Do you have the 2008 permit? Can I take a look at it? I think we have a copy, thank you.
Neil, do you have anything else to add?
No.
Okay, well, let Anthony take a look, and...
Yeah, I, I think, again, we've kind of brought up, and we have to look at it as it's presented to us today, as opposed to six years ago. No, I'm just saying, we're kind of looking at it, you know, we do have the increase in height, you know, from what it is now, increase in size, and, you know, I realize that it's, yeah, but I think, we've done it in, certainly the past five years that I've been here, we've kind of, generally, it's kind of moved in that direction. Especially when there have been spaces, there have been a few times where they haven't had that option there, and they've tried to...
I was looking for a rock.
Yeah, there, and they've kind of given us a reason, but usually that five foot, we've held that quite frequently. People have kind of modified things to kind of make that work. It's not something that we just started hearing, that you brought to our attention with that, that need. And it's not that we're replacing the existing building as is, you know, we're increasing the size, the size of it. It is going to be a two-story structure, and they also, also a little bit larger, front to back, and side to side, so... Again, that was just, my opinion, fortunately, it's not in the floodplain, so we don't have to worry about that, but...
It's been so much effort trying to make it look small, so we've done it, and with the architect, to make it look as small as possible. We didn't want to overwhelm the house, and just, you know, so it kind of disappeared. Looking straight back at it, you're thinking that it's not going to look that large. So, I just don't compromise on five feet, four feet, or three feet, it's got to be five feet.
Well, it's really up to you, I think, if you want to ask the board to approve something less than five feet. We can do that, but then you're going to have to figure out how much that's going to cost you, because it, I think, is going to be a different project than you originally envisioned. If you want us to do that, we can consider that, or you can go back and...
Well, to, to be clear to them, our decision aside, if they got their proposal approved, and then they decided to move it further back from the lot line for cost reasons, that would theoretically still be allowed under our permission, if we granted the one foot. Again, if we granted the one foot.
Yeah, I mean, I think there were some troubles with the one foot, the, the fire, firewall notwithstanding, but...
I know that we've had other people in, in your neighborhood that we have, that haven't had also, because, because of the size of those lots, and still have, I don't remember those, you know, and still have required them to move it five feet. And I remember very specifically, I think it was you and Brian were advocating eight feet on that. I remember she was a retired teacher.
And we went to four.
We went to six.
And we went to five feet. And which I, it was, she was very upset, because it was the same situation, things were really squished, but, you know...
As far as the change in, in sort of, I think, attitude of the boards in the last 10 years, it really had everything to do with fires, and I think that was, you know, the sense I got from the board. Then we got into the discussion of State Building Code and all that, and that's, that's why it's an issue now. Perhaps it wasn't as big of an issue back then.
I have, I have a philosophical, I think, thing, what you're asking somebody else in the same position. I, I think unless there's something extraordinary, I, I don't know why one person in front of us, you know, should be allowed to do something that somebody else, under the same circumstances, has not been allowed to do. You know, that's where I'm kind of coming from. I, I know it's not great, but I think you do have some options. You have, you know, 30 feet, it, it is at least 30 feet, yeah, 30-some feet on your side yard to the, as you're looking at the garage, to the left of the garage, you could slide it over, and that would increase your space. I know that it would take, require some breaking up of your, of your driveway, you know, and maybe laying some of that over. It's not without its issues, but in the end, it's probably, you know, that part, whether or not you want to slide it one direction, you know, away from the house, is entirely up to you. But I'm definitely leaning towards, you know, requiring the five feet. I don't know about my other board members.
The only thing that I would just take issue with, you said 30 feet? I don't think that there's 30 feet from the side, from the...
It's 25.
This, this plan, this plan says it's from the corner of the existing garage to the sideline, it's 30.8 feet existing, and 29.1 feet proposed. It, it also says that your rear deck is 26.2 feet from the rear line, and if you're going to put a 24-foot structure in there, or 28, you're only four feet, so if we bring you forward five feet as...
You're one foot beyond the deck.
You're going to be one foot closer than the deck, but, but your garage is more or less lined up with the southwesterly side of your house, not with your deck, so you still have, you know, access through the, between the garage and the deck. It's not like you're coming up, almost touching the house, or going forward of the house, or anything. Again, I would probably, so that you know where I'm coming from, I would like to see eight, to be honest. I would be able to go along with five because of the State Building Code. I regret that it's, you, I understand your position that a month ago, or six months ago, you had a permit that said you could build it on the lot line. And, but I, I would look to probably say to the five, five feet, and, and word the doc, word our decision in such a way as five, minimum five feet, so that if you wanted to pull it forward a little bit more, that would be okay. We're basically going to, I would suggest we limit how far back you can go, but other than that...
And you wouldn't limit the left to right, though?
The left to right would be limited by, by the existing...
Setbacks.
Setbacks.
Which is...
I think it's eight feet on the sideline.
15.
I think it's eight.
That's also Hathley Road.
Does it say on that?
It says on the cover of the ad.
What is this, an A, is this A1? No, A3. It's eight feet.
Hard yards, eight.
Eight feet side, yeah, and it's 20 feet rear, though, right?
It's 20 feet rear, yeah.
So we're giving you a lot of relief from that 20-foot, getting it back to five.
It would be a lot easier if it was that way the first time. That's, I think, the shock of being here.
Yeah, sorry.
I'm just expecting that, you know, we missed our deadline, and so we're all, going ahead with what we're going to do. And the plans that we've had for all this time, that we only didn't do, because just all, total money disappeared. If we made it, if we made it 20 by 26, then, you know, so that we can pick up two feet, you know, in terms of how far forward we come, does that, do we make a different decision for that?
20 wide? You, no, you want to make it 26 wide and 20 feet deep?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I guess 22 by 26.
We just want to know if we, if we have to make, you're going to make a decision tonight that we're going to walk away with. We want to know what our options are going to be.
That's all.
Because you just said five feet from the back, and eight feet from the side.
And, you know, as far as I'm concerned, we can make, that's what we can make the decision based on.
We could probably craft the decision that said that the applicant may raise and reconstruct the existing garage, provided that it not be closer than eight feet to the sideline, and five feet to the rear, which gives you that whole corner to build it, and that it not exceed, but we don't really, really know, don't have any right to. Because we're giving you so much relief on the rear, we could say, and it not exceed a certain size. You know, we could say 26 by 26, or, and I don't think, I don't think it's that much concern for us, because as you say, you want to build something that's, that's proportioned to the existing house.
Yeah, that was a big deal, and, and I'm not thinking that I'm actually going to make it 26, because that'll make it look really wide from the front, and the house is actually 26 from the front, and it was, you know, we went between 20 and 24 to keep it narrow, so that it was, you know, we spent, you know, the reason we're here is because we spent so much time trying to make a nice building, and spending time with the architect, and, you know, and, and that's why we're here. So, you know, it's, it's, it's a struggle, it's one, make it wider, it's not what I wanted to do. I guess, if the decision gave us that option.
Well, you could do a couple of things. We could continue this meeting until next month, if you can kind of figure out where you want to go with it, or we can just proceed and make a decision tonight.
Well, you're not going to change your mind on the five feet, so I think we just have to... Because we want to get going.
Well, I don't think I will, but I, you know, I don't know these guys.
Well, the other thing, the other thing that comes to play here, though, is the question of the second floor. Again, you're, you are, you're building a structure too close to the lot line, significantly too close. 20 feet is what it should be. We're giving you relief from that, and you're presenting that you're asking to build a garage with a storage area above, and that's maybe all you ever intend to do with it. But someone in the future could decide they want to, they want to use that space for residential use, or something. I'd be inclined to suggest that we would want that not to be the case, where it's so close to the lot line. I mean, the relief we're giving you would also, we would, I would ask that we consider prohibiting it to be living space in the garage, in the future. If there, if someone later bought the property and tried to put an apartment above it or something, it would be in violation of the permit that we gave you.
That's fairly standard, yeah?
We do that, we have done that often.
Could we, I mean, I'm just trying to think about the size of our house, because I mean, our house is non-conforming. It's not set back by 20 feet, or anything like that.
That was before the zoning laws, it says right in our...
30 feet would be the, the front yard setback.
So could we actually even get a building in 30, 20 feet from the back and 30 feet from the front?
That's why we exist.
I see that if I wanted to put a, you know, a living space, you know...
Well, there are things you can't do, because you can't make your lot bigger. So we're here to grant relief for people who have a lot that is smaller than zoning allows. There are some things that, you know, your, your front yard setback is 30 feet, or an average of those in your neighborhood. So we, there are things built into the bylaw that allow for use. But the, the idea of having a detached garage with a second floor on it just suggests, you know, could be used as a, a sale loft, and a business back there. Legally, within the bylaws of the town, you could have a, someone could be crafting sales in their garage, and selling them with only one employee, other than those residents on the property. Perfectly okay. We're just, I'm just suggesting maybe not living space.
Makes sense.
That's it, so, I guess, um...
Would you like us to draft, to propose a decision, or would you like to talk with us next week, next month?
Yeah, I would think we would like to have a decision, because, you know, we were going to start lines, you know, I'm just going to say. I have a copy of the previous decision, but I guess this decision is different.
It will be.
There was some, some talk about helping us get started by getting the decision fit quickly, or something. I don't, I don't know if that's possible.
I think it's probably...
That's possible.
It's up, so it's in, we have, and when we tell people, we, we have the right, the law gives us 90 days, as much as we can.
I would act them that it'll be before.
We try very hard to accommodate, you know, particularly if you have a need to get it earlier. We, somebody can work hard to get it done, I'm sure, as quickly as possible.
They keep putting the contractor off, he's been very nice to this point, but, yes...
They're, no, they're not always nice forever.
Well, he has, but I do, um...
Am I up on this one?
Yeah.
I will commit to you that I will get the, I'll get it turned around by the end of the weekend. And there'll still be, once it's filed, there'd still be a 20-day review, and you'd be operating at your own risk. Move that the board find, the applicant may raise and reconstruct the existing garage, detached garage, provided that the, it not be closer than five feet from the rear line, and conform to sideline setbacks. That gives you a whole big range that you can put it in. And that the second, and that the structure not be used for living space. That works? Living space would limit future, you could still use it for a...
They want, they, normally a special program for detached buildings, they have to conform, anyway. I mean, somebody could throw something illegally.
Right. Again, you could still use it as a, for business purposes, if you wanted to have a, a sale loft, or a pottery studio, or your office, all those are things are allowed in the zone.
Give you a copy of the home, home occupation by law. Within certain guidelines.
Within certain guidelines, yes, it's in the, it's in the bylaws.
The last time, you know, plumbing and, and electric was approved, is that...
I'm just saying not living space, I'm...
Right, right, so, I mean, we don't generally do that. We don't, I haven't ever seen a decision we've written where we allow plumbing, and we specifically allow plumbing and electrical. I mean, every garage would have an electrical, wouldn't it?
I don't know, they said it was okay.
Yeah.
So maybe it doesn't say anything in the permit, or maybe it's not required.
I have had, I have had people propose that the, there not be a toilet allowed in the, but we've always allowed them. I mean, again, if you, if you're working in the garage, and you want to have a sink and a bathroom, and why not? I mean, even a shower, outdoor shower?
But that you would have to deal with, Mr. Duggan. You, the time comes, you would, if you want to put in some plumbing.
We're only talking about where can you put it?
The residential district, you have allowed accessory uses in a, in a detached building, and, you know, unless you factor restrict them, they'd be allowed to do those. Surely having a bathroom, you might be doing flooring that's up there, sloping, you know, and everything.
But living, living space...
Living space, right.
That only disqualifies it for being a residence.
Yeah, we, we don't really allow sleeping rooms in garages, anyway, because, you know, not to do that, there would be tubing to Vgress, smoke detectors, you know, so... Not, not just that those have, but...
So it's five-yard rear line?
Five-yard rear lot line, by the side yard setbacks, so they use your living space.
And not to be used for living space.
Anybody have any suggestions?
And we're not limiting the size of the structure, it's can be...
Right, they can work with that.
And, or with the condition that you, you bring in to, you know, before you get your permit, you'll have to bring in a stamped plan.
I can see where it is, it's right there.
Hold on.
I've got it.
Okay. John seconded it, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Good luck with it. We'll keep this...
Yes.
...hostage. Give that to Nicole if you would.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't see, no, I didn't see that happen, so, I was like, oh, nice and nice.
Nice. Okay.
We've been pretty consistent with the, with that, as long as I've been here, pretty consistent with the asking to move that.
We get that quite often, there's often changes in the regulations, and special sprinkler systems are required, and three families now, they were not, you know, two years ago, and it's a very expensive addition for many developers, and, you know, they just kind of, well, when did that happen? I mean, regulations change, and boards, positions on things change, and this directly relates to those fires, and I think it's a very real concern.
Hummer Rock?
Yeah, yeah.
Actually, seven, seven Avenue in 2010, the two houses.
Oh, yeah.
They were, I think, their permit was 2007, so that was seven, that was a long, long time ago, and it wasn't, when they say six months, they missed the 2008 deadline for the Permit Extension Act by six months, that's what they missed, but that original permit was way longer.
Two seven and eight.
Different board, different circumstances.
And it hadn't been, they hadn't done anything significant to act on it at all, so technically two years it should be.
Right, yeah, so they, yeah, they should...
Well, even if you could apply...
If they, if they had received a permit, special permit, in, what was it, is it January 2008, it would still be extended under the Permit Extension Act.
No.
That's what, when she said six months, that's what she's referring to.
I think it wasn't.
I think it was, I think they just missed it by this August.
They just missed, they just missed that, yeah, they just missed the permit.
Wasn't extended.
Can you send me, do you have that, that in digital?
Here it is.
No, here's the permit, it was, now, the permit was granted on June 19, 2008, so they were subject to the extension.
Whatever the date was, in 2008, that's what they missed.
Right. So, anyway, they've got it again, so, um, all right, so does anybody want to talk about rules? Okay, let me just do this, let me just give everybody, I don't know if you've even brought it, Anthony walked out with his keys in his hand, so I know you didn't have it.
I'm sorry?
No, I'm just kidding, you brought stuff with you.
I don't know what you said came directly.
Did I do something wrong?
No, 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 I was just giving you a hard time. Does Neil, does Neil have it, give Neil a copy, too.
Yeah, I got mine.
You got yours?
Want this for Neil?
Right, 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 right. So, and Nicole?
Do you have an extra copy?
No, I just...
I just gave it to Nicole.
Yeah, I gave it to Nicole, unless Nicole doesn't want it.
An extra copy of what?
Someone can borrow mine.
Okay. Here's another one.
You got an extra one?
Got a copy, same thing?
No, it's different, and Nicole, you know, maybe one thing you could, and, there's two more of these, I don't even remember at this point, I printed these things off, is this document, is that on the website, or is that a handout from the town, do you know, can you tell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Definitely, that's on the website.
Okay.
Two different ones.
All right.
That's not, that's not...
That's you already had, this one?
No, but I think, that's what I'm saying.
The rules and regs for, for zoning and check of 40-year are on the website.
Okay, so...
Thank you.
And then here's more things, all right, so, so what I, what I, what I brought for our perusal, and then in case everybody wants to, here's a copy of the application, so, what I was...
This is the existing app.
This is the existing application, so what we've got is an application, we have this little thing, what do I need to submit in order to have a public hearing with the zoning board of appeals, then there's another document on the website, which is the one that gives the dollar amount for the appeals and special permits, and then we have the rules and regulations, so, is, sort of the way I'm looking at it is, we've got kind of four different documents that people who are wanting to file with the board could look at, they might look at one and not something else, or they could look at all four and get a little confused, so, obviously, we have to have a permit, and obviously, I think it's really good to have this, what's on the website, which says, what do I need to submit for a public hearing, but this extra document and the rules and regs, I'm wondering if somehow that particular document could be, could be moved into the rules and regs, so we eliminate that extra document, and anything that people need to know can be within the rules and regs, am I, is that made, is that clear at all?
The cost document, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, yeah, if we can call the one that's got, it's three pages, and, and it's got the dollar amounts on the first page, appeals $300, special permit $200, if we could somehow...
Put that in the rules and regulations?
Right, work that into rules and regs, so instead, we have just one, all that information is contained within one document, does, does that make sense to anybody?
Yeah, it makes sense to me.
Okay.
And that even has instructions for filing the zoning board of appeals application.
Right.
Is there a difference between the process that you have to go through to change a rule and regulation, and the process that you have to go to, go through to increase the fee?
Well, the fees have to be approved by the board of selectmen, the rules and regulations are only approved by the zoning board.
Right, so I think we could rewrite our own rules and regs, then we have to load on, and then they get...
It seems like it might have been by design that the rules and regs referred to fees which may change from time to time.
Well, I think that we shouldn't keep the fees within the, I think we should leave that out of the rules and regs.
So there's going to be two separate documents, it's just a matter of which is in which.
There's a list of fees somewhere, right, or you call, when they call you, is there a list, do you give them the fees, how's that work?
Yeah, I just tell them the list of fees, it's not like I...
I think that one might have been the primary, and then there's some other general information in this document that doesn't necessarily fall under rules and reg.
Right.
Well, I think we can make it a rule and reg, though, we could say, you know, in order to file an application for a public hearing, the application must, the applicant must do the following, you know?
Right, but there's some other, like, informative paragraphs in here.
Right, and just to kind of, this one that says what you need to submit?
Right.
That's just a copy on the second page of the rule, of the cost.
Right.
So, I mean, this is already duplicate.
And it's, and this is in the application as well, the requirements for what you need to bring.
You know, it is, but it's interesting, you know, people don't come with it, you know, it's, well, the one thing, you know, copies of scaled and detailed plot plan showing building location setbacks, if applicable, you know, we didn't get that tonight.
I could, what, maybe I can, because all I have is that one dot page for the application.
Right.
I, maybe I can make the instructions or whatnot part of the application, which I don't have.
Okay.
Do you know what I mean?
I think they are.
That makes more sense for the people.
Right?
Yeah.
The second page starts to be accepted as a filing, the application must include.
Right, and then really clear, certified plot plan, signed by, you know what I mean? Because it's amazing what we don't get over and over and over again, even from registered engineers.
And I have to, and I have to accept it, whether it's, whether it's completed or not, and the board decides whether they're going to accept it, like, I can't deny in that application, I can't deny something somebody files with me because it's incomplete, all I can do is bring it to you incomplete, and you guys can...
Kick it back.
Kick it back, I can't take it back, by law, I have to accept it.
And I think we should put in, you know, our rules and regs, that if an application is not complete, you know, at the board's discretion, the following will occur.
Yeah, I, I don't have the authority to accept it back.
What Nicole's referring to is a letter from town council by the state hundreds of years ago, which basically said, in order to avoid constructive approval, you have to take an application even though incomplete.
Okay.
Open the public hearing, and then send it away.
Even if they don't pay me the fee, I still have to bring it to you, and you open it, deny it.
I couldn't pull out that letter.
That would be great, because I think if we can incorporate that into our rules and regs and let people know, if we can start, you know, we'll still open your hearing, but you may get denied, or, you know, delayed, or...
Asked to reapply.
One thing I'd like to add is just at least some kind of a sketch of, of the building that they're proposing, not, doesn't have to be completely planned, but elevation, front side elevation, very, very important.
As opposed to just the footprint?
Yes, yeah, and they all have them, you know, they...
Usually, they're kind of like...
Yeah, even if it's an elevation, and, and with height, things of that nature, and I also think when people reconstructing, it'd be about instrument, they want to see it, and, you know, they want, they come into our office, what do you mean, you know, understandably, they're looking for plans that perhaps aren't there.
Okay, so, so...
I don't think that's a burden at all.
No, I don't think it's a burden, because I think they all do it, but, so what did, how, how would you phrase it?
Elevation plans?
One, you know...
Eight copies are proposed of proposed...
Front side rear elevation.
Of proposed structure, including front side and rear elevations.
Yeah, and you also want the square footage of the proposed structure, correct, you want to stick that in there somewhere.
Yeah, makes sense, because we always ask for it when they don't have it, yeah.
Existing square footage is a proposed, because I know we're always asking for that.
Yeah, it looks like the current applicant.
That provides a benchmark for me, because under the bylaw, it's...
Well, that triggers it for you, too.
Yeah, it triggers it, because that's a 20% trigger, plus any, any additions down in the future, I prefer to trigger it based on what the board was allowed, do allow 2,500 square feet, and they want to go to 3,500, they need to come back, so...
Is eight copies still, so now we have to...
No, now I have to send to conservation and planning, so...
Ten?
Yeah.
So you have to send, no, is that, isn't, don't you have to go somewhere else, too?
Planning and conservation, I used to have to give 50-foot frontage to DBW, but that was taken out with the rest work, oh, maybe now that we do the floodplain special permit, there might be more.
Referrals.
I think it's under the floodplain.
Well, before, oh, we've, under 940, that's administration, it says, special permit granted authority shall refer the special permit application to the Board of Health, Department of Public Works, Conservation, Board of Selectmen, and Planning Board.
That's five.
Or Board of Appeals, whichever is applicable, so it seems to, or, so, doesn't look like planning board needs to, no, it would be the other one, well, maybe, I'm kind of confused on that one, what does that mean?
I was told by the town administrator that I need to send all my zoning applications to planning and conservation.
Okay, so, well, Board of Health, this says Board of Health, Public Works, Conservation, Selectmen, and Planning, that's five extra, and then how many do you get for...
Five for, for the board, for the board members, one, you know...
That's 10, 11.
And one for the record?
One for the record.
12.
And then, yeah, and then, 12.
So I think we should, we should acquire 12.
And that's for all applica, the special...
All applications.
It's for special permits.
Okay.
I think that, I think the gray area here has been, you know, the burning question, are these findings or are these special permits, and I think, we very often call them special permits, but I think technically they're probably just findings, I think they're a special permit when you, when you find that the addition is, it's a expansion of the nonconformity.
Right.
And then you find that it's not substantially detrimental, that's your special permit, but when you, when you find that it's not...
Intensification, is that the word you're looking for?
Intensification is what I'm grasping.
But it becomes...
If you find it's not an intensification, but I, but I think to cover ourselves, we, in them, the applicant, we issue a special permit, which is then subject to appeal 20 days, et cetera, et cetera, as far as referring, say, to Board of Selectmen, you know, it's...
I mean, it gets expensive, it gets expensive for people.
Yeah, it's cumbersome, and...
You know, I mean, for a big company, and, but, you know...
You know, certain entities you never hear back from, but the two that Nicole sends them to Planning Board, and I think on the big ones, obviously.
I mean, the big ones I do, like, big projects I do.
They refer to everybody.
If you come in with, like, these homeowners here, that would be a big expense for them to...
But the Conservation and Planning get them.
They get everything.
Board of Health, most of these reconstruct, frankly, they're in town's order, really.
So, are you just suggesting that ten, then, is sufficient?
I just think, yeah, I mean, I think you could refer to 940, and then...
10, and then if I need them, I always, I can always ask, you know, I mean, I can, I mean, why wouldn't they grant it to me, no one's ever refused to...
So then we should switch them.
I mean, I think the bylaw, the bylaw, 940 says special permits are supposed to be, so if you say how it's actually gotten in the trenches, and we're going to be having a new zoning secretary in the near future, so...
Right.
I think whatever you choose to write, and then...
Well, you know, the, the other, I'll tell you, here's an option.
Just all aside, I mean, I recently, I won't tell, well, it doesn't matter which board I got it from, but, you know, a copy of store, drainage couch, you know, two inches thick, you know, and there's 20 copies of these being circulated to the Board of Selectmen, to Neil Duggan, to the Board of Health, you know, it's such a waste of money.
What about this, what about if we, we have 10 copies for everybody, for all the people that we talked about, and then just a copy of the actual application or whatever
Right.
To, to...
There's another way...
And Public Works, and, and Selectmen, if they, if they want it, and, you know, without, without the attachments.
Yeah, there's another way to handle it in, in the office, and that is simply to send a memo to these boards and say, the, you know, we have the plans, and I'm not telling the...
Yeah, that's a good idea.
The two, the two that are essential, Planning Board and, and Conservation, because they're always involved somehow or other, but, but send a memo out and just say, you know, these are available for review in our office.
I think that's an excellent idea.
And then that way you're saving the applicant money, you're not, you're not wasting, you know, killing trees unnecessarily.
It's expensive for these people, for the homeowners, but, you know what I mean, it's a lot, it's a lot...
Paper thrown away, and it's wasteful.
So, so are you suggesting the whole kit and caboodle be sent to Planning still?
Ten, ten plants are adequate.
I'll still send the plant to Planning and Conservation, only because I was asked to, and then I'll send a memo to the other boards, telling them that it's here, and come down and review it if you're interested, I mean, I've, I've never gotten, I never get comments, I was told a year ago to send it to Planning and Conservation, and not one of them has ever commented, either one has ever commented on anything I've sent them, you know what I mean, so...
Yeah, these were, these, these routine special permits for reconstructs, there really isn't that much concern, so...
No.
The Planning Board really has enough jurisdiction, and Conservation, it kind of alerts them that it's coming.
That's coming to them, yeah, so, I mean, so just to tell them, hey, it's here, if something triggers it for you, you can come and look at it.
And I think by doing that, it, I don't see any problem with it being, you know, I think it's still in compliance with 940.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The referrals.
Just inform them, the other thing, too, like, on chapter 40B, under the 40B law, they are required to bring in 20 copies, and everybody doesn't, you see, though, so...
Right.
At least in the school department.
Oh, yeah, that, that goes everywhere.
Yeah, well, this is, yeah, this is...
And the bigger projects, I, I'll send it everywhere.
But also Conservation gets notified, the permit process is one, they'd be triggered.
They don't get a building permit if they're, if they're in Conservation, if they're big on Conservation, so they're, you know, they get notified, if, if they're doing a 50-foot frontage lot, and they need an A and R, and the Planning Board, the Planning Board's going to find out, so, you know, they're, it's all, it's all kind of covered, there's not much...
Oh, look at that, we're back already, we don't even write anything down, no, you can have it to Nicole, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll switch that, I know, the other thing we had talked about previously is additions to the record, to try to put some limitation to encourage people to not make submissions, late submissions.
Many boards might have some, you know, blocks the, on the Planning Board, been on...
You know, is that why I recognize your problem?
How many is left?
Do you, do...
Third, two.
Third, two, okay, yeah.
Okay, so is, does the Planning Board have a, a time limitation for extra submissions to the record?
Yes, I believe so, although I don't want to go definitively and say this is, this is the time limit, but yes, that certainly comes up. this is the time limit, but yes, that certainly comes up.
Well, I wouldn't, I mean, I don't know what it is, but, I mean, I think we could consider having the same time limitation, in that if people try to submit something outside that time limitation, that we can, we can either accept it at our discretion or-
I think that's important to have it at our discretion, if it's a minor change, typo that they corrected or something like that, that kind of comes in last minute, okay, thank you.
I think, you know, to differentiate, the Planning Board tends to look at subdivisions, they tend to look at things that need review, you know, when they come in, engineers will very often drop things off that, you know, the Planning Board's engineers need to look at, and they don't have the time, and then they come to the meeting. And I think in our case, if somebody might say, oh, jeez, you know, I only have four copies of the certified floodplain, and I get some more copies, well, they try to get in, so that they get on the following meeting, and we do a lot of tobacco, but they're typically not things that require any detailed review.
No, but the reason I even bring it up, Neil, though, is because there have been times we've gotten some pretty, you know, stack of cases or reports, and we get it, you know, first, yet new-
Oh, yeah, I agree, cell tower, I mean-
Yeah, those larger-
No, I, you need something in there, but I'm saying, I agree with John, that there should be some discretion.
Absolutely, I don't have any problem with that.
So, the concern, going back to the concern I expressed way back when we started discussing this, is, is most of the opponents that come to the board are butters, neighbors, that type of thing, they find out this stuff, usually not the day it's advertised, usually as things start to percolate around the neighborhood. And that's just, just, just the reality, so, some of them are finding out that something's coming up tomorrow, or maybe in two or three days, in the best case, and I don't see precluding them from then scurrying around, getting some material together, which is, which is, I think, what is, what often happens here, because it's, it's by definition a very short time period from the time something is advertised as a public hearing and when we actually have it. So, you know, I, I guess my view of it is, I don't mind putting, I guess I don't mind putting in some, some sort of rule, but I don't see this as being a big problem for us. I see it in a couple of instances, you know, the one on First Cliff is the one that I remember particularly, we gave people a little bit more time to come back, and everybody was fine with it, and actually, I think, once the neighbors there figured out what was going on, they realized this was actually a pretty good plan.
Right.
But they hadn't had time to think about it, or time to absorb any of it.
Right.
And oftentimes, they keep, they haven't had time to get up to the town hall to see it, so they're sometimes seeing the plan for the first time at the meeting.
Right, exactly. And then, and then, you know, and then, of course, you've got the applicant who all of a sudden is getting all this stuff thrown at him a day before the hearing-
Right.
Or at the hearing, and shouldn't the applicant then have an opportunity to, you know, do its own research and come back and say, well, you know, you're wrong about that floodplain determination, or, you know, that, that's an old wives' tale about our neighborhood, and it isn't true, so I, you know?
As far, as far as complete applications, Sue, you know, when Nicole notices or sends out the about a notification, people do want to come in and see, so it's not in our interest not to have a complete application, because they come in, hey, well, come, that's not here, so, you know, we, we need to avoid that, too, so, you know, we work at it, at the office level, too, and make sure the applications are complete, but, and some of the larger projects, Eltow, for instance, Chapter 40Bs, yeah, they're coming in at the last minute, there are butters who want to look at it, engineers need to review it, absolutely needed deadline.
Well, and I think by putting a deadline and, and leaving it open that at our discretion, the new material will be reviewed or may require the application to be continued till the next meeting, would encourage people to-
Right.
Bring it in earlier.
Yeah, and also depending on the, the scope of the material being dropped off, you may not be able to review it in the time, you know, limitation that you say, like you say, has to be submitted seven days before, where the engineer, the consulting engineer might need two weeks.
Right.
How about, a couple of questions, we're trying to streamline the documents, we're adding things to the documents.
Very good.
First off, the, the application, does this suit your needs in the office, Nicole?
Yeah.
That, nothing needs to be changed on the application form?
Oh, absolutely.
You're happy with that?
No, no, in the back, I want, I'd like to see the elevations and the square footage thing.
Oh, in the-
We can do that easily.
Add it in here, okay.
Yeah, we can add it in there.
So what we add in here will add, be added in there?
This actually, I mean, Nicole, we've worked this out over the years, the application, and it works, it's pretty streamlined, and, you know, I don't see that it's ever a problem in the office.
So, once we, those things we want to change, but these two documents are another story.
Right.
This, I think, we basically leave on, on the website, it's simple, it's straightforward, it's for someone just to go look at, and if we want to put a link to these two, that's fine. Rules and regs is different than this, this is an informational piece, the rules and regs is just, it's, I was looking at it, the first two paragraphs of this are in the rules and regs directly. Many of the things in this are, are expanded from the rules and regs, so I'm, I'm looking at the rules and regs, except there's nothing specific about fees, there's nothing specific about the form of application, so I'm inclined to suggest the rules and regs stay the way they are, I mean, they're, they're basically our guideline for, we have a chairman, we have a clerk, we have public hearings, meetings, quorum, et cetera, et cetera, and I don't even think the public ever needs to see the rules and regs, it's, they need to be accessible, but there's nothing there that informs them too much.
Well, I disagree, because I think that's what we're all talking about, the, the nature of the application and being complete, you want to know what you, what you have to know to, to-
But the, but the rules and regs document is not what's communicating that to the customer, to the-
Well, it can.
But-
Well, it says, it says you have to complete the application in the form you received from the building commissioner's office.
And so I think what we want to do is have a, have a public friendly document like this, and I think this does a good job of it, because it, it says-
Thank you, and I wrote it.
Well, no, I think it does, I mean, each application is processed by administrative assistant in accordance with the legal requirements and timetables established under Massachusetts general laws. It doesn't specifically stipulate them there, it does later on, it outlines them more for how long it, you have to file an application, a decision. And I, I really can't see anything on the first page that it's friendly, it's, it feels complete to me. Reacting to what you're saying here, right now, on the second page, you've got two checks, and then you've got eight copies, we changed that to 10. I guess we decided 10. Add a next, add the next row, 10 copies of proposed structure, 10 copies of a plan showing proposed structure, including front, side and rear elevations, and proposed and existing living, living area calculations. We just add that in there and add it on the application.
Yeah, so they have a space to fill it in.
Right. The rest, you know, a copy of the current deed, a copy of the letter of authorization, a copy of the assessor's card. Then the next paragraph says, "By law, the zoning board must open its hearing application no later than 65 days after the filing with the town clerk." I'm suggesting we add a paragraph in after that that says, "Additional materials must be filed with the-"
Building Department.
Clerk, the building department, or whatever, however you want to describe it, not less than five days prior to the public hearing, because it basically says we're going to have a public hearing, they have until five days before to get it in, and then-
Maybe any additional, additional materials which the applicant wishes to file.
Right.
This way we don't see, we don't see applicant wishing to file it like that. We're requiring additional, additional materials.
And then, in that you-
But it's not just the applicant, it's the applicant or any, any other-
Or, or party withstanding may wish to file.
Applicant or party withstanding.
And then, "Incomplete applications or late submissions may result in the continuation of the hearing or, and delay in decision." We're just simply saying may, not will, that, that allows us the discretion we want, and it puts them on notice. Complete, give us a complete application, or we'll, we'll open the hearing and close it.
It should say should, probably, instead of must.
No, I said, I was going to say may.
At the beginning, no, the, at the beginning part, you said, the materials must be-
Oh, should be filed, instead of say must, it should be, should be filed. And then, as I, as I go through the rest of it-
Oh, I'm a case law on that.
Again, I, I, the where and the whereof and the why for, I'm not very good.
Why do I give all of those words?
You should understand.
Hard to be filed, that's fine, but-
Should means, should is too iffy, I don't need to.
They're both subjunctive.
Shall.
Shall be filed, shall, no, shall means, Frank, you know what shall means.
But is that what must? Shall is must.
Shall is must.
And I think-
All right, you're on a roll, don't, don't-
Should are the same, so I'm good with that.
But my feeling is the rest of it is, it's friendly, it's complete, and it's informative, and I'm not sure we want to-
I just think there's too many of them, I think there's, I think that-
I think they're in different places.
The instructions for the, the application could actually be taken out of this whole document and put with the application on the front page, okay, or in the very back.
But the application, the application stay comes to the building office, it goes into a file, it stays there the whole time, we don't need the instructions to come with every application. This is something they need one-
When they tick it up, I can give them the instruction statement in the back, and then comes in, rip it off, and say, if it's needed, I'll, I'll keep this page.
People, particularly homeowners applying for, you know, special permit, they like easy to read, short, simple, straightforward instructions, they're not going to read-
They don't want four different documents, is what you're saying, I don't think they do.
Now, what I'm looking at, as, as we're talking here, and anticipating a new zoning secretary coming in, this, this is going to be, should be kind of a guide, too, because this, I noticed there's a lot of timelines in here, and in the, in the paragraph on page two, that, Ed, you just were talking about adding language about, you know, the filing, the, under, under the 40B, it says, "Public hearings must," it says, "will be open, must be open within 30 days after the filing date with town clerk," this is on a 40B. Should also be added, two weeks in, in also, the, they must be advertised, the hearing must be advertised two weeks prior to the, the opening of the public hearing, it's a very, very tight, tight, timeline, and I, I believe there's a, there's a, I just saw it recently in Lawyer's Weekly, that a, there was a case on a 40B, gee, I think the zoning board secretary wound up being fired, remember that one?
Yeah, you were.
Yeah, it was on a 40B where she didn't, she did not, the filing, the filing was not timed-
You have another job.
And it's extremely tight, and that-
What did the fire about?
This almost should be in bold letters down here.
Right.
And as long as I'm around, and I'm sure Bob, you know, I'm going to know that, but, but somebody coming in isn't necessarily going to know that, because there really isn't, you know-
Who, doesn't the zoning secretary do the advertisement?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So, so I understand, you know, why then do you think it should be in this document? Because that's a, unless you want to use this for the sec-
Well, it has to be kind of a guideline, you, then you get into the back and it talks about special permits finding, when, when they had to be filed, town clerk, it just seemed like that was that type of a document that-
Right.
It wouldn't hurt to incorporate that line in there, and that's really all you need to know.
Well, it does have this about the notice, see, this is what I'm saying, it's got this about the notice of hearing right there.
Right.
There's, there is some issues maybe with the way this document is laid out, maybe it's not so much as the, you know, maybe you need more like, you need more like a P and S.
Yeah, that, 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 that actually covers this, if you look at that and go back to that, but I think on that 40B, the 40B thing is very, it's scary, it really is, it's so-
Probably needs to be a separate one for 40B.
But once you get rolling the 40B, it's, it's fine, it's just-
We're eliminating documents where-
Uh, well, and don't I understand there may be like up to three 40Bs filed yet this year?
Yeah, there's, we've, there's talk about other 40Bs, yes. I haven't heard three, but-
I have.
Really?
I haven't heard three.
Yeah.
I know of one, but I don't know-
One really big one.
Really, really big one.
So, yes.
Of streamlining the documents, couldn't we make this incredibly well-drafted document the cover page, or the informational cover page for the rules and regulations, have the rules and regulations sit behind it?
Yeah.
We could make this the instructional cover page for the application.
And then we've got two documents instead of four.
And now we have two documents instead of four, and in this document, which is incredibly duplicative of this, can stay on the document, on the website.
Website, yeah.
It only exists in the virtual page, so we don't count it.
I think that's the smartest thing that's been said all night.
And then in the same typical ad.
Except for everything Neil said.
No, but we could, we could add both what, what Sarah, Ed and Neil had added.
Well, make those changes.
The 10 copies, those changes there.
The big changes for this document, we make the corresponding changes in a year.
14-day filing for 40Bs.
Yep.
If we could put those pieces in there, at least that would-
Now we have a much more, or at least a much more straightforward system.
Who's going to write?
Tom? You have probably the best handle on what's expected for the-
I think really just-
Come on, I didn't hear any ideas, perfect.
I'm wondering, could you draft it?
Do you, do you want me to add these things in?
I can stop, you know what, I can come by and work with you.
Yeah, no, I don't mind, it's really easy.
Yeah, then maybe-
You know what they want, right?
Right.
He can help me, yeah, we can do it, it's easy, it's out.
That's, I'm just thinking, because you know-
And then I'll just send it to the board for review.
Right, and then we'll talk about it the next time we have a single application tonight, which is never, we'll probably get to it, we won't get to it next month, because I will lie here.